Good evening. And welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I'm very pleased to see such a large group this evening. This is our special meeting where it's a public forum, but we did have one item of business that came up that instead of calling it a special meeting, we figured we would do that quickly. That's why we're sitting here at the conclusion of this first item of business, then we will take a brief pause and come sit in front of you. That's why the seating looks like it is. But before we do, let's first rise if you would, and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also as customary for our meetings, we will also start with a moment of silence. As we enter our moment of silence this evening, I would like to have everyone think about Ms. Mabel Almany. She lives in Port Hope Court and is part of the Almany family. You know James is on the planning board and she is in the hospital fighting pneumonia. So just keep putting your thoughts please. And with that, we'll call it for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item under new business is the consideration and potential action on settlement of the town's claim against Bermuda Bay LLC and Bermuda Bay Home Owners Association who passed due water bills. And in our packet, we have the proposed agreement, which is up for consideration for this evening. Steve, would you like to?
I will. And members of the council, this is an agreement that's been negotiated with Bermuda Bay LLC and Bermuda Bay Owners Association. And this was in contemplation of litigation that we had talked about possibility of filing some months. And it's what we discussed in the first session in July about how we would approach this. And the parties have engaged, it's a pretty extensive discussion with the town. And the agreement that is before you is the result of those discussions. And it is very much in line with what we discussed as a potential settlement in July that we'd be settling for the town. And what this agreement does, it reimburses the town the towns on when they pay the sums that are called for in this agreement. The town will have been made hold for all of the water that it has supplied to the community to save communities over the period of time. Now, the town will not be getting their late fees or other charges, but the ability to collect those is questionable at best at this point in time. But this will bring it into line. The Owners Association has now taken over operation of the communities and they have paid their bills up to this point. They get the current, and this would bring them current. They do have a bill that is due next week. Other than that, they would be currently with their bills. The Owners Association has assessed that the members have raised the money to do this, to make this payment. And I think it's a fair settlement for everybody in the business going forward. Everybody is where they ought to be. And I would recommend it to you. It has been approved by the LLC, it has been approved by the Owners Association. I actually have the signed agreements from them and the approval that the town manager will sign it. I have emailed copies of the signed applications to the two new towns. The Owners Association will be opening with the town. And the only thing that will remain, the originals were in the mail to us. And the only thing that will remain looking with them to make the payment possible tomorrow. And we would pretty much be finished with this at that point in time.
Thank you. Any questions on the board for Steve?
So Steve, they will make that lump sum about a 25th?
Tomorrow.
And we're sure since they got back there, do they have this money?
Well, the Owners Association is actually making the payment.
The Owners Association is making it, okay.
Yes. And I think Mr. Moore is here somewhere. He's with Cape Management and Cape Management is actually running the operation for the Owners Association. He can talk to you about that a little bit, I think.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Neil's more on the president of Cape Management. We serve as the managing agent of the Home Owners Association. I can confirm that we do indeed have the money in hand and would be making that payment tomorrow.
I'd like to point out two things, sure, everybody, so we make it clear to everybody here. First thing I want to make very clear is that the people that live there were paying their bills. The problem came between them paying their bills and the towns being paid. So I don't want anybody to think that anybody back there is lax in any way regarding this issue. And secondly, to reiterate in a way that what Steve said is that Steve and I had talked about, or also with the whole group, I don't remember when, but as he just said, livelihood of collecting is maybe questionable. And even if so, it's quite possible the legal fees would exceed whatever we might gain for it. So we feel like getting the money for the water is pretty much about what we're going to get. So that's what we're at.
And I'd like to thank Steve and the Bermuda Bay Home Owners Association for working on this. I know it was just a matter of months ago, we were first sitting down in a closed session to discuss this and a potential litigation. And I'm very thrilled that we didn't have to go down that path. So thank you for your work and thank you for the Home Owners Association coming together under negotiations. So with that, a motion would be ordered.
I make a motion that we accept the agreement entered into by the town of Killable Hills and the Bermuda Bay Owners Association has presented to us this evening.
I'll second it, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Well, that includes the official business that we needed to do up here. The next item under new business is our public forum. So if you'll give us a couple of minutes to, it won't take us that long to sit there, but we need to adjust the cameras and lighting. And what we could do before we do that, thank you, is I'd like to call on Steve, our public works director, to do an introduction for us of our new assistant.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to introduce and welcome Anthony Patrick. If you have a step forward wave as our new assistant public services director. Anthony started with us on October 15. He's originally from the area, graduated from Clement High School, then graduated from UNC Charlotte with an engineering degree. He's been working for the University of North Carolina system, both at ECU and NC State for about the last 10 years in their facilities management group. And we're glad to have him here and I know he's glad to be down at the beach. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, we had such a strong team with Randy and Steve, and now I think we have another very strong team. So welcome, we're excited. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will reposition. Before we start with the public forum this evening, I just wanted to go over a couple of things, kind of maybe set some ground rules just to make it flow as best as possible. First is just to kind of bring us together for what the purpose is. And the purpose of having this type of true town hall type environment meeting is for us to have a more casual conversation with you all in a less formal environment. So it's an opportunity for you to bring concerns, accolades, anything that you want to bring to our attention. Certainly, as you notice, it's quite a roomful tonight. So while we haven't in the past operated on a specific time limit, I do want to just encourage you to try to keep your comments to within that three to five minute time range. And that way it gives everybody an opportunity, who wants to speak tonight, that opportunity. That being said, if it seems like someone's going on and on and on, please understand at some point I may feel necessary to jump in and say, wrap up your comments, if it seems to be going on and on, because we do want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak that is here to speak this evening. The other thing is just to let you know that in this type of environment, we won't be making decisions tonight. What we will be doing is taking the information that you share with us, taking your concerns, and then finding the appropriate place or time to make a decision. So for example, it may be something that comes up that we decide should go to one of our committees to work on, or it may be something that we want to send to the planning board, or it may be something we want to schedule on the next commissioner's agenda. So hopefully what you'll do is have an opportunity to share those, we'll have some discussion, and then we'll make a decision on where is going to be the forum that we can best make a decision or take action on what you're bringing forward, if that is the case that something needs to be done. So, okay. So with that, we will just get started. I guess you can, how did we do this last time? Did we do it from your seat or, no, we do need to go to the, okay. So go to the podium, and when you do go to the podium, if you'll introduce yourself by name and also by address, please. Okay. Who would like to start?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Right around the front for two weeks, maybe.
You can't give us a two-week sermon, Mr. Greg.
Most of my sermon would be what the gas prices and things like that. Greg Roberts, I run Compass Rose on the corner of airstrip and the bypass. Really, I'd just like to bring forth some of what I've seen in the last two weeks, because I've been everywhere. And I know what kind of started this was back in summer, talking about outdoor display. And so I'll kind of focus a little bit on that. And one of the things I noticed as I travel around, in particular, north of Atlanta, Roswell, Marietta, which are pretty high dollar areas north of Atlanta, there's a lot of stuff outside. And there's not that many vacant businesses. And it looked vibrant. And it was vibrant. There was a lot of traffic, a lot of business, people outside, people on the roads, and stores were packed. Between those two areas, there was a segment where there wasn't as much outside, there was more vacancies in the businesses. It didn't look as vibrant, didn't look as inviting. I'm not saying there's correlation, but absolutely Marietta and Roswell are two pretty nice areas and they had a lot going on. Well, then I ended up, I have another location down in Port Charlotte, which by the way, I've lost my location because our landlord got foreclosed upon. Putting seven businesses out of business in our little strip mall. As best as I can tell, I was only there for about 24 hours, 36 hours, there's probably over 100 vacant businesses within a mile of my tech's location, counting the seven brand-new vacancies. Now, down there, we're trying actively to find a new location. We had to put stuff in and out. That was the choice, that was one of the acceptable things, we moved in and out, which brings up its own difficulties. But we found one location that had a large fenced-in area and some aspects of it looked good. We talked to the county about it, while we were getting a temporary permit to operate outdoors for a month. And we're told, no, no, nothing behind the fence, no outdoor storage, no. And the zoning lady also told my manager, you know, there was a boat repair and boat sales place that wanted to go in there and we told them no. And I'm like, oh my god, you've got hundreds of vacant businesses. How can you just keep saying no at the town level? And so that's one thing that I've seen. And the level of regulation there is far above what we have here. But the level of vacancies is far above what we have here, even though I think we all agree, we have more than we like. And I found it just really kind of enlightening that we're in a position that I think we can be proud of, because I got to tell you too, Killable Hills, the way it works compared to Port Charlotte, we're lucky. We got a few more power lines than they do, but other than that, we got far better. Because one of the other things they've done, as the businesses went out of business, they relaxed their signs ordinances. But they relaxed them in probably the dumbest way that you ever could. Two years ago, I could get a one-month banner for $25. So we got a one-month banner for $25. Then a year ago, I could get four one-month banners for $25. So guess what? We did. This year, I sent my manager first of the year, go down there and get that $25 banner, it's the new year. And she came back, called me on the phone and said, guess what? $25. We could use it for the whole year. I said, wait, now I have a banner forever? Except that everybody can. I don't want a banner forever. I don't want everybody to have a banner forever, because it just starts to look worse and worse and worse. And we look pretty good. So, you know, there's a lot of ways that I think we can really be proud of what we lost and what we've managed to maintain.
Does anyone else, maybe what we'll do to try to give this some direction too, since there are so many people, would anyone else like to speak towards kind of outdoor display type, that topic or that genre before we introduce a brand-new topic? And if you don't, if you don't, doesn't mean we can't later, but that way we kind of group those together. Is anyone else here wanting to share information on that?
Mayor, I do.
Okay.
My name is Chris Merrick. I'm one of the owners of Ocean Line of Runnels at 2001 South Croatan Highway. My concern with outdoor display and is certainly about bikes and kayaks and things that I have to put out, and also the beautification of the town. And the reason I wanted to get involved with the commission that was recently formed, and I'm so thankful for that opportunity to you all, is, you know, I'm interested in hearing what the current complaints are from the citizens and other business people, for sure, because I just haven't, in the meetings I've attended, I just haven't heard the negatives coming from the community. So I, as part of that commission, hope to make a difference. And that means hearing from the horse's mouth, you know, what people really don't like. And the other part that I observe as a businessperson is, for example, we have ordinance about flags, and my understanding of that is two flags out and one of them needs to be the United States flag. We all witnessed the flag thing getting taken advantage of. And I just want to make sure that the public knows also how to voice the complaint, if there is one, where it goes. I'm not sure if that's the case. I think the squeaky wheel gets the grease and that's the way a lot of us run our day-to-day operations. But I just want to make sure that the community knows with this commission that I hope to be involved with, that there's a place to go to, and then there's a person who is, you know, is handling that complaint. And one of the things in those past meetings was just an increase or a continue with the friendly Killable Hills attitude that we think we have, where we can come and talk. And I appreciate the board making that type of dialogue. And that was what I wanted to share. Thanks.
Could I ask, before I go to the podium, it used to be that when we came into a meeting like this, if you lived here a long time, you knew half of the people. And I can look around this group and I only know five or six people. Could we each say who we are and where we're from, even if we don't want to go to the podium and say something, so we can identify the faces? If everyone's comfortable with that, I don't see why not. So, Mike, we'll start with you and just do, let's not go into a long thing of all about who you are, but yes.
Katie Hauzier from Katie Hall.
Ben Sproul, I live here in town and am on the planning board.
Paul Glad, I'm associated with the Sea Ranch Resort.
Mike Andrews, Sea Ranch also.
Jerry Frey, I'm a private citizen.
Brian Brightfield, I'm a planner for the town.
Greg Roberts from Compass Rose.
I'm Marley Roberts Bradley, I'm a RE/MAX agent and kind of great partner of his mother. I'm a mom.
I'm Valerie Lowack, I live here in Killable Hills.
Mike Lowack, Killable Hills, I'm a realtor, pool boy, alternate on the zoning board, and general all-around pot stirrer.
Lou Enzwayman with Killox Supply Company.
Chris with Ocean Line Runnels.
Mike from Crappy Fries Tarea.
David Harmon from Lowe's, my wife Denise.
Sandra and Scott Entler with Carolina Seaford.
Carol Ann Angeles, Jolly Roger.
Sue Kelly, resident and new on our new community appearance commission.
Wanda Wise with Just for Beach Rentals.
Sam Wise, Just for Beach Rentals.
My name's Tom Rogers, I've been over here for 18 years, but I've only lived here permanently for almost nine, so I'm kind of a transplant, but I do have a concern that I'll address later on my street.
Algeeta Citizen, chronic complainer.
Hi, I'm Troy Tilly from Fox East here in Killable Hills.
Ron and Barbie Wright, East Coast Hot Tubbs, we've just relocated to Killable Hills to the new, the old Persouth Bank Belly. We're moving in there and we're glad to be back and glad to be here. We're residents of Killable Hills and glad to be back with everybody, so, thank you.
Bill Rosa with NACs at Hammocks.
I'm Ivy Rip Ingram, I'm just a town resident, I've been a town resident for 13 years, served on a few committees for the town in the past.
My name's Kit Charde Lumboz and my husband and I work at Captain George's and we lived here almost five years ago because of that. And where's the KTH?
I'm Karen Brown, I'm the new president as a chamberwoman.
I'm Abby Styler, I'm with Kitty Hawk Kites and I'm also a town resident.
Joey and Benny and I are residents, we used to be in Williston.
And I'm Joe Lighthead, I live in Kitty Hawk and I own awful Arthurs in Killable Hills.
Dana Harris, Assistant Chief, police Killable Hills.
Beverly Brooks, I'm the finance director here at Killable Hills.
Mark Evans, police captain, been here 17 years, resident of Killable Hill.
I'm Cassie Shulon, I'm here with Kitty Hawk Kites.
I'm Willow Kelly, I'm head of government affairs for the Outer Banks Hand Builders and Outer Banks Realtors Association.
Y'all know who I am.
Steve Albright, Public Services, KTH.
Meredith Guns, I'm in the planning department for Killable Hills and I'm also a Killable Hills resident.
I'm Greg Loy and I'm the planning director for Killable Hills and I've been here for about 47 years, I think.
Where are you, Greg?
Where I lived. I'm a vagabond.
Living in the woods.
Yep, in the woods.
I'm over here.
Debbie Diaz, Killable Hills Town Manager.
And my name's Mary, I'm the town clerk here.
And then behind the camera, we also have John Tower. John.
Films our meetings and is also sergeant in our police department.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was nice. Thank you all.
Certainly. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Anyone else on kind of the public display, outdoor, yes ma'am?
Carol Ann Alex, this is Jolly Roger. I just want to speak to the businesses. We're here, some of us don't really know why we're here, because we don't know what's all involved in the things that people are trying to change. I know that a couple, 10 years ago, things got changed drastically. Signs changed, this changed. And all we want you to know is that we're concerned, we want to do the right thing, but we don't want to lose our individuality. So if there's changes coming, we're here because we want you to know we are concerned and we want Killable Hills to remain, and a lot of banks, some individuality so that we're different than anybody else.
Just to everyone, I spoke to Carol Ann right before the meeting, we have formed a committee that Chris spoke about, that is going to study the outdoor displays and it may result in a change, but we don't know where it's going to go. But they'll be looking for public input as they go along their meetings, we'll give it to the public. So you'll have plenty of time to come in and comment. They'll help along their way and we'll see where it goes.
I have a problem with my application, so you just can't do it. I'm just hearing you.
And I think Chris raised a good point, which the appearance committee is going to be the appropriate platform. If there's not a need to change anything, I can speak personally, then don't change it. You know, if everything's working and we don't hear that there's negative negativity or that there's issues, if it's not fixed, if it's not broken, don't fix it. That's at least what I would subscribe to. And, you know, we will have this appearance committee that will really be looking at ways to celebrate what's wonderful and beautiful about our community and look at strategies that may, as they get, you know, opinions or if they get advice from other citizens or business owners on what we can do if there are areas of improvements that people are recommending, then they will shape that and push that forward to the board to discuss and consider. That's one.
Well, just, you know, some of you probably are not aware, this goes back to 2006. Some concerns from our land use plan that folks suggested that they wanted the corridor to be a little more friendlier as far as beautification goes. And we've held a number of meetings since 2006. As a matter of fact, I chaired a meeting to invite the business owners to come with their input. And we did it, it was a bad time, to be honest with you. We did it in the summertime and that's when most of the businesses, they're slamming and a lot of them couldn't show up. What we arrived out of that meeting was that we would let the business owners continue to police their own self. And then it's come back up again several times. So we've dealt with it since 2006. We just, as the mayor said, if the committee decides that bringing their recommendations to us, that we don't need any changes, then I'm certainly sure this board will be fine with it. But we're trying to, we're trying to close the gap and let's close an issue that we've been dealing with since 2006. It's just a short, brief history of it. So I'm sure there can be compromise. And I know that I'm willing to make sure that I have an open ear to it, but that's what we decided to do, is form the beautification committee and get folks that own businesses and people in the community to serve on that board. What best to make a decision is what the folks that run the businesses want to do. And so we rein in on that and hopefully we can come to a compromise and everybody can be happy and make some decisions.
Where's the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you just, well, I mean, just through the microphone just because.
Okay. But it was a totally different subject.
Oh, okay. We'll have a good end of the meeting.
Bill Rosa with NACs at Hammocks. I just wanted to share some figures with you about how important outdoor display is for our store. This year, this spring, we underwent a renovation of our front area. We planted 500 additional perennials, created some new seating areas. This year, the Killable Hills store is up 29 percent in sales. And I relate a lot of that to our renovation outside. We introduced a new line of recycled plastic furniture. And the way we got the word out about that was creating seating areas outside, back of the right-of-way, not somewhat visible from the street, but not terribly so. But we did 150 from the street, but not terribly so, but we did $150,000 in that this year. I relate that directly to outdoor display, it's incredibly important to us, it's a great way to get message out, and it can be done peacefully, thanks.
I'm Marley Roberts Brantley, I'm the Realtor and Compass Roads, I'm going to change the whole focus, tired of hearing about outdoor display. Let's talk about some of the things that are hanging out here that, God knows, we really need to talk about, sidewalks, safety of our employees, of our foreign employees on bicycles, how many got killed this year, how many people who went out late and maybe had a couple beers and tried to cross the bypass and got killed, oh golly, this is so important, we need to figure out a way, and I know, you know, the times don't have any money, the businesses don't have any money, we need sidewalks, we need connected sidewalks, Greg sees from his store, where they come down his sidewalk, then they go out around to get on the highway because of the next business, there's no sidewalk in that right-of-way. Easements, the right-of-way, who is in charge of mowing on the beach road, we've seen weeds and the grass two feet tall, and it's the same thing, it forces people out into the highway. Well, I always thought it was DOT that took care of mowing the right-of-ways, maybe they ran out of money, does the town have to call DOT and say, hey guys, get out here, this is terrible, because again, our employees and our foreign students and the people on bicycles and our visitors who are walking and running, when they hit two feet of weeds, they're out in the highway, whether it's the beach road or the bypass road, and they can get killed. Some of my fellow Realtors are going to kill me for this statement, but I thought that all the times, cataractulation, I remember 10, 15 years ago, and I know that Realtors are not supposed to put for sale or for rent signs unless it's on the property that's for sale or for rent, not in the right-of-way, and I just happened to count the number of signs from Ocean Bay Boulevard to Walker Street where our office is, and on the east side of the highway, last week, 10 days ago, I ended up in a Jolly Roger for lunch, so was that 10 days ago, 10 days ago, I counted 22 signs that were in the right-of-way, and you look at the power poles, and that's what you use as a measure, the power pole, it should be east of the power pole, there's probably another five signs that were kind of questionable, maybe on the line, and my feeling is, I remember the big to-do that we had, if you had a condo listed on the oceanfront, let's just take an example, I have Olden Strand Condominiums, the condominium associations had to put up boards, and the Realtors were supposed to order nine-inch square for sale signs to go on that board, so you had a condo listed, you put your sign up, the only problem that we had with that deal is, once you put the sign up, you sold the condo, the sign never came down, so it stayed on the board, and it's so little, it really didn't work, but, you know, my feeling as somebody who works in the town is, whatever rates we have, we should be enforcing. And the other thing that really gets me, and it got me because Greg was out of town, Christmas decoration regulation, he's smiling, he probably figured I wouldn't dare bring it up, I don't know exactly what your time span is, he knows, but there was a regulation in the town of Kill Devil Hills, that you can only have Christmas lights up from whatever it is in December to a certain date in January, okay, well, Greg removed his outside lights from the trees, I go to the post office and I get a certified letter from the town of Kill Devil Hills, well, any kind of certified letter kind of upsets you, and you're going, oh God, like, what have I done, well, Greg missed one eight-foot section of Christmas lights, one section was still coming on at night, so instead of somebody from the town calling and saying, hey, this is so-and-so from the town, you guys have a light up, why don't you take it down, now, I don't know what it cost, it probably cost $15 or more to type the letter, to take it to the post office, I mean, I just think it's a ridiculous waste of taxpayer money. And then, of course, I live in Manio and I go home, and it's dark and bleak and pitch black over here, because we're not allowed to have any decorations up after a certain time, and I hit midway and I start looking down the highway in Manio, and first off, we've got these beautiful banners on the light poles promoting something, Lost Colony, the farm, whatever, festival park, we have Christmas decorations on every pole as you come into town, the Christmas shop is all lit up, and the coffee shop, they had decorations, Christmas lights that must have been three feet solid, and you know what, they were up all winter, they didn't have to come down in mid-January, and it looks so refreshing, and we look so dead over here, and I just think that I wish this beautification committee would kind of rethink some of that, and I guess that, other than the very obvious stuff, we, you know, y'all tried to fight the concrete poles coming up the bypass, so now Kill Devil Hills has concrete poles on Bay Drive, we have concrete poles, why do we still need all these other little wooden poles, you drive south, looking at NAGS Ed, you've got great areas where you see the concrete poles, but there aren't anywhere, all the rest of the stuff is underground, and I don't know how they managed it, that we're, there is a picture, Ms. Mayor, I've seen it a long time ago, somebody took a wide angle, long-range photograph, it could have been the beach road, and when you saw the lines, and I was trying to get a hold of this picture, it is so graphic of how we look when you're looking down half a mile, almost anywhere, it's just too many power lines, and I think I've said my say, and thank you all very much.
Before we move on to the next person, several of the things that you said certainly are going to be appropriate to pass on to the appearance committee, and what we will do is go through, Mary is taking notes tonight, and we will go through and sort through, and then, of course, it will be the task of the appearance committee to start prioritizing, because I'm imagining you guys are going to have a big list after tonight, I see a couple of our members of the new committee here, but I will go back to just some of these things, we may be able to answer a couple of questions that you just were curious about, so Steve, you might be the appropriate person to answer the question regarding mowing, did you ask who's in charge of mowing, is it?
Yes, NC 12 and 158 are both NC DOT right-of-ways, and they manage the mowing, the last several years, they've used a contractor that makes approximately five passes a year through those right-of-ways.
Steve, is that what for the town would call?
I mean, we can call, but if that's all the money they've got appropriated for five passes, I mean, I guess we'd have to send a letter up the chain and try to get them to mow bi-weekly or, you know, additional.
What can we do about properties, is there a regulation?
Our staff sends, our staff sends that to DOT, and Steve is absolutely right, we can't force them to do any more than the five cuttings a year if they don't have the funds to do it, but we stay on top of that, I know for a fact he stays on top of that.
One of the things you see is where property owners mow, I mean, they mow all the way down to the pavement, but if you don't have a property owner, then you come into this patch, and maybe it's only 100 feet, I don't, I mean, I don't think they have to mow a lot because the property owners mow, but that's what causes the problem, is it's not done consistently.
That's exactly right, they skip most of the approved properties, and then they mow where the unapproved properties are, and you had a question about approved properties mowing, and I think Greg can answer what the limits or height is on that.
24 inches.
24. When it gets two feet tall, then you get one of those certified letters a lot of times.
The mow side of Harby's was over 35 feet all this fall summer, I mean, what was with that?
Well, if you'd called my office and told me that, I would definitely send the co-compliance officer right there to check that, and Harby's, that's the in-business, Harby's that's in his business is not mowing their lawn, is that what you're telling me?
Well, you know, it was closed all summer.
You're talking about Taco Bell? Shrimp together.
No, I'm talking about.
Oh, shrimp together, okay.
Which is now shrimp together, but it was vacant all summer.
Okay.
And one of the things, and I think, Chris, you asked, maybe you asked a question kind of like this, is about how we know, how we take action on things, how we don't, and we really operate on a complaint-driven, so if someone calls and makes a complaint or raises a concern, then staff will respond to that, so it's great to have so many people here tonight, because you guys can help us, help the staff do that, it would probably, I'm sure you're sitting here going, well, I'm sure they're out and about and they see it, but you guys know you drive past the same thing every day, and it may not, you may not see it, even though you do, but you don't realize it's an issue, so don't ever hesitate if something does not seem right, we're going to have a gang presentation coming up in a few weeks, and that's part of this awareness on, if you see something that's not right, don't hesitate to make a call, that's the same thing, whether it's an appearance issue or a concern about something that's just not right, make the call, the staff can look into it and then figure out whether it's right or it's not right, and if it's not right, what we can do about it. Yes.
I did, I did that at one point in time, because right there about a school, the whole path going down there, the lights were off, it was overgrown, I went down, I cut everything back from the thing, I called the town and said, huh, them lights are off, and then she said, the lady told me, go down and get the number off the power poles and call North Carolina Power, and I was like, wouldn't that be on the town, I mean, you guys probably have, they have a number, I called Greg actually after that, because I was like, Greg, help me out of here, and he took care of it, I mean, but it was like, for them to tell me to go get the numbers off the power pole and call North Carolina Power and go sit on the phone for an hour, when they have a number, probably they can call and get a little quicker response.
Thanks for not giving up the call, we're saying.
Well, better not say nothing, Greg's the go-to guy, but nobody else, he does a lot.
Did you call the Dominion's Board of Raisin D and D, and has jurisdiction over the Florida Cut Grass?
Yes. And of course, Harbilly Brown's mowed, you know, our frontage here, I've come into the road.
Right. The DOT is interested in the progress.
And you can discuss the wooden pole situation, you can provide some of the history and where we stand with that, or is that something we need to gather information and bring that we can report on at our next meeting, I think that would be more appropriate to actually have Dominion Power speak to that specifically, because you have transmission and then the other.
Distribution.
You also have.
Distribution.
Distribution, thank you.
Distribution, but you had your cable folks as well.
Right, and so there's a number of issues, it's not just Dominion Power, but I think they're more appropriate to address that. Well, then, Marley, to answer that, what we will do, and for those of you who don't come back out to the next meeting, you can catch it on TV, but how about we'll get some information and report on that at our next meeting.
Well, if it's brought up, and if you're talking, Bob's on the board, and those poles, they do, they're electric off, they're pulling up to higher poles, so they're actually doing these telephones, what's on there right now, but there's also some power, I think they do all their power, just lower than distribution lines, they're down lower, Dominion Power doesn't have any difference, told us that it's just doing telephones.
There was supposed to be some consolidation, Marley.
Yeah, I remember reading about it.
Right, and I don't, I don't know how that's progressed, but it certainly doesn't appear that it's progressed very well, and that's something we definitely need to follow up with, but I know that, and to go back to your underground situation, trust me, we taxed North Carolina Power extremely hard over those underground lines, as you very well know, we fought to keep those tall poles off of 158 and continue it down the west side, we lost that, we went all the way up to, what, Debbie, Supreme Court? Yeah, Supreme Court, and we lost that, it's tough fighting the big giant, and, but we, we tried to do that, we pressed them hard to get underground, and they say it's millions and millions and millions of dollars to do that, and then if there's a problem, it's a substantial cost to them to go and repair when it's underground, so we worked very, very hard to circumvent that, but we were the losers in that case.
There's an awful lot of underground cable, they're laying cable on the bypass now.
That's the phone company.
That's the phone company.
That's the phone company.
Yeah, they're going to put, they're going to take down their poles.
Right.
That, that's progress then.
Well, the others aren't long-term to give.
Right.
Is that cable?
No, it's telephone, in Barker.
No, but what's going to take down is telephone poles are going to come down from telephone lines, then whatever cable is up, is above there, because isn't the, like, charter and...
Charter is.
Sure.
They're above craft there, well, how did...
I think there's still some electrical on there too.
Do you?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure on the distribution lines, which are the lower wooden pole lines, they did move a couple of them up onto the cement poles, onto the lower bracket, but still quite a few of those ones you see, and I know what you're talking about, quite the ones you see are still electric lines, but I've gone up the bypass and counted, and there's occasions where between two of the big transmission lines, there's as many as seven wooden poles.
Yeah.
Some places it's only five, but it's anywhere from five to eight, and if you ran up the length of the town and you multiplied that out, I mean, it's, well, it might be a thousand per hour, I never did, but, and it, to me, it's ridiculous when you look there, and I just, I...
It's unsightly.
It's not something that I would be willing to give up on, we haven't followed up on at this point, and we're going to see how far it goes with the telephone company putting theirs under, and if the others might want to follow suit fairly soon, if not, I think it's a campaign we should get on. I watched the cable company in my, on airstrip, because they were having some problems, and they came from the corner and they went, I was, I was upset because I thought they were going to mess up all of my airstrip frontage, because a crew came out and they went underground all the way down the street, about 500 feet, in six hours, and they were gone, my grass, I went out, looked at the grass, I'm like, well, that's, that's amazing, it didn't look like anybody had been there working, but they did that much work, seven guys came out and did about 500 feet of underground cable, really fast, very efficiently.
Part of the problem they have when they get in the bypass, they've got to do a lot of boring, they've got to get under streets, and it is costly.
Well, they did, they went under my driveway, they went under two driveways of mine that are paved, and then they went under, because the rest of my frontage is all done drainage, and so they went under, they dug short trenches and then bored, they didn't actually dig, they seemed to prefer to bore, as far as that goes, and it was pretty quick and pretty efficient. pretty efficient.
Is there anyone else that would like to bring? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Eddie Paul Rogers, I live at 1723 Seaswept, which is down off West 30th, as you know. I didn't survey the neighborhood or anything, I've just been there for 18 years. But we had a terrific flooding problem leading through that street, 'cause we had no ditches or anything. I don't know whether it's ever been looked at, it may, may have years ago, but I've had property there for that long. I'm just, this is kind of a personal request. I didn't survey all the neighbors, but I could tell you, living on that street, when it floods and the ground's saturated, it comes down there like a river. In fact, I put a sub-pump system all along my garage area, and of course, being the good neighbor, I get a lot of water, but everybody else, it comes down that street. Now, I know the street's kinda grated, so sometimes the driveways, the water come off the street, running into people's driveways. And that's like, you'll see that in different locations, but it's very severe. Now, when I'm talking about Seaswept, it goes two directions. You have the right side, when you come down West 30th, other one, the left side, going towards Indian. Now, there are summer houses there, which including myself, which, when it really rains and we get a big storm, it gets severely flooded. And some of those houses are nearly surrounded, there are some houses are nearly surrounded, and it lasts several days till the water goes into the ground. Now, I think, I'm not sure what can be done, I'm not sure what these things cost. I don't know, if you put ditches in, you'd have to inquire with the homeowners. There's, I just, what I'm just saying personally, it's a street, we've had this flooding problem for a long time. I would just ask if you take a look at it, was it financially feasible? Do you need to survey the entire neighborhood, do the owners see if something they would like to proceed with, if it was doable? But basically, it's just a by-request living on that street. Could you just kinda look at it, take a review of it, and see if there's something that might be within the interest of the town, the homeowners? But it is a significant problem on that street. And I'd like to give two accolades to two things. The cleanup we just had, I think it's still undergoing. They really did a great job. I believe it as clean as they can, you might have to rig up a few sticks and leaves, but those guys did a pretty good job, 'cause there's a lot of stuff out there that people put together. And I also like the animal control. I've used them several times, and they come in my neighborhood a lot, 'cause we have a lot of dogs and stuff. And I had one myself, which she died recently, but they've always been very helpful to me. If you need assistance or calling them, they come in, got a, it was a weasel, or a wrecking, I think it was, out of my storage room. He tore it up, I think it's out of that place. I got some lime insulation to put up. I could not find that dude for about three days. He had himself so buried in there, and he would leave. But my animal control guy come over, picked him up by the tail, and he said, take it down, they said, so I just wanna give compliments. And I've been over there when I had a lost animal, they helped me find him. It's just a compliment to those guys, those people, they do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, can I call in your name?
Yeah, there's some history there. We had a wet period back in 2004, 2005, and I actually believe there was engineering plans and a design done for the Virginia Sunset Suite, Seaswept areas.
It's pretty bad.
And I think there was a lot of opposition from the neighbors, that they didn't want the open drainage system. There was actually a survey sent out to try to gain support, and it failed to get, I forget what the percentage was, but failed to get the support. And so it was determined at that time to, you know, based on the wishes of the neighborhood, to know open drainage.
Maybe you look into it, do we try, may have, there's a lot of new people lived in. It's kinda a mixed thing, a lot of talking with percent recent, year, two, three years.
It might be a different feeling now, because ours is there. There's one kind of down there, I mean, he's surrounded, and it doesn't go saturate like mine does as well. But I've been up to my ankles in water many times out there and building out, and that's why I put this sub-pump thing, because, and even then, when it gets really bad, it's, that street is like a river at times. It's just, if you look at it, that's all my request. It's a perfect forum to bring it up, you know, it's more personal than some of the other things, but I think it's, it's a thing that we should look into, or hopefully. Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to go next?
We're not done yet already, are we? There you go, somebody's coming.
Hello, I'm Essie Schwamm of Key Hawk Kites. And John Harrison will be here tonight, and he asked that we come, and we're happy to do so. I drive through Kilbrook Hills, 'cause I love a calling, and I work down the street in Kilbrook Hills. And I actually wanted to say thank you to the police and fire people, because I've had to call in the police many times when the alarms go off at the warehouse, and they sent the dogs in one night, and it was great, I didn't have to go in there. So it was wonderful. The, I guess, kind of what I wanna speak about is the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And I think more to, more to everybody than just to you all, that maybe we all need to be the squeaky wheels. Businesses need to survive, and, you know, if the restrictives are too, if it's too restrictive, they're not able to do so. It's just too hard to survive sometimes with the restrictions that are put on businesses. So, so we need to be squeaky. If it's, if it's two people who don't like something, and there's 20 businesses, and I'm really happy to see all the businesses here tonight, I frequent many of you, so, so for that purpose. And then I am gonna speak to the sidewalk issue as well. I don't think I really need to, because I think we all know that pedestrian safety is crucial and scary. And it's not just here. I was driving through Brandy the other night, somewhere I had a bike full, right across the road in front of me. So it's not just here, but it's a very serious issue, and it's scary when you're the driver. So be a squeaky wheel.
And I, you know, right now, in light of certainly some of the fatalities this summer, and just what everyone is very aware of, the pedestrian safety and even bicyclist safety, Chairman Judge and the mayors of the different counties have met once now to start brainstorming and talking about what we can do, what options there are to address the situation, how to do that, whether it's education awareness campaigns, which is probably part of it. Certainly, we wish that the money was out there to do the sidewalks that we all want, and I think agree on are needed. But anyway, I think we will continue to meet and discuss, especially before we head into another season, what things we can do, at least some of the things that don't cost a lot of money, which are some of the education and awareness. We do have a lot of workers that come here from other areas that are not familiar with the safety rules that we have, or even just, you know, that there are other ways to get through the town versus driving on the main bypass on their bicycles. So.
Speaking to that campaign, just with the small one that we do with Key Hawk Kites, I think there's a lot of businesses across the Outer Banks that's willing to even help maybe facilitate that education and spread the word.
No, man, sir.
Two of your questions at one time, sidewalks, which that's kinda, Bob, we've been dealing with that for how many years? But there was talk, maybe two years ago, maybe a little bit longer, where the Board of Commissioners had considered, I hate to use the word forcing, but that's about what it was gonna be, was to make all businesses on 158K, put their own sidewalks in. And we realized that that was gonna be a huge expense for the businesses, and therefore we decided not to do that. But that was, at that time, that was one of the means that we looked at, just 'cause of the amount of money it's gonna take to put a sidewalk from one end of town to the other. See, as you know, we're paying for one down Bay Drive on the Soundside right now. But we did take consideration to the businesses, how much of a hardship it would be.
Did they actually get grant money for what they put on the west side bypass? Gosh, can you defend it?
Well, we got $300,000 last year for the-
For Bay Drive?
For the sex, the fifth section that goes from intersection of First and Canal all the way to the end of Cul-de-sac. We got $300,000 from the state, and 75 from the tourism bureau, a hundred from the tourism bureau.
Is there a little dribble that can be done?
Had someone tell me that they didn't think that the businesses like mine, I put a sidewalk in, that was part of the site plan, part of what we've had to do.
Well, new businesses, we require-
New business.
And then so for the old ones, well, had someone tell me, well, you know, if the town comes along and paves that one over there, businesses like you are gonna be really mad. No one would care, be happy, go sidewalk over there. So I don't think that there's that, but is it possible for the town, just in an organized fashion, if you got a hundred grand a year, and you did this one, and this one, and this one, and then the next year, but if it's, if it took us 15 years, so what? 15 years from now, we'd all have sidewalks. And, and that's better than where we were. I mean, 15 years ago, we haven't advanced that much. But is it, if there is grant money available, even if it got parceled out in dribs and grabs?
Well, Meredith is our grant person, we can get her to look into what grants are available. She's the one that writes all of our grants.
There's gotta be lots of sidewalk money out there right now.
Business to do this.
I can tell you this, our planning staff, they don't miss an opportunity to try to get a grant. They really don't. They, they're on, they're on top of that. And they work very, very hard to try to get, over the years, I, it's been substantial amounts of money all the way back to the Centennial. I mean, Meredith wrote that grant, and I've, I've worked hard on that and pushed that, the Centennial path. And Meredith, that was over $300,000, wasn't it, at the time? And that, that's been how many years ago?
2002.
Yeah, 2002. So, yes, I, I will, I will stand up for them when it comes to that. They work very, very hard to take advantage of every single grant opportunity they can to try to save you folks money.
Who would like to speak now to the board, to the citizens?
I'm a big recycler, and I go over there, it's terrific over there, a lot of people are doing it, going over there to the, you know. Does the town get anything for that, or we just do it because we're public interest, and we like the environment, and not litter and all that stuff? I always wonder, because there's a lot of folks that are participating in recycling these days, even with the contractor. But I don't, I just am kinda wondering myself, does the town get anything for us being good citizens, or is that just a good thing to do? I don't know, it's just something I have in my mind to ask. Does that any revenue or anything for all those windows here?
I'll try to tackle it, and help me if I mess it up, Steve, but we had, we have cans, we have a container over there that we, aluminum cans fill up. And at one time, we were hauling it over to the county recycle center, and they had a contract, we'd, we'd get, I don't know, out of Suffolk, they'd get so much a ton. Same thing with the white goods. I'm not sure if we're getting any, any out of it now, like we used to, Steve, but we've worked that deal out with the county, that, are they coming to pick those vehi-, those containers up from us now, Steve?
Yeah, certain ones they take directly to market, others we haul, but they, not all of them are, there's winners and losers on the different materials. You know, some it ends up costing to dispose, others they make money. So the county takes them all. But your question was regarding the curbside?
No, I just-
I think he's talking more white goods.
Yeah, it's just, there's a lot of recycling going on in the class. I know they have this new machine or something, but I just wondered if the town get, was, since we're all being good citizens and doing it, and it's a great thing to do. I just wondered, does the town get anything from that, or we're just, that's okay, if we're, if they're not. It was just something in my mind.
And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it's not so much what we get from it, but by not putting all of that in the regular, our regular trash, you know, we have to pay the dumping fee, that may not be the right terminology, so, by the pound. So by not putting that into that dumping fee, we're paying less in dumping, and that's dropped considerably since we started the recycling. So we may not get for it, but we definitely saved. Is that, Steve, is that the right way to explain that?
Yeah, exactly. You're saving on those tipping fees. It doesn't do anything.
Tipping fees are typically 63 to 65, it varies, dollars a ton, and we're saving on, on that. That's why we're trying to encourage our citizens to really take advantage of the curbside recycling. It is a fabulous program. You do not pay for the can, it's a 90-gallon can. In my situation, in my household, of course, it's just my wife and I, I actually have more recyclables than I do trash.
We do tons.
And, and, and what we've done with that, it's, you know, seven bucks roughly a month, they provide you the can, they come once a week. If, if you wanna cut the service out and you're out of town for 30, 60 days, pick up the phone, call them, they won't charge you. They won't come pick it up, they won't charge. They're very, very flexible to deal with. And, and they're, they, I mean, it's saving us, and we can certainly provide, you, we can put it on our website. We, we're in our, what, third or fourth year? We've saved tons in tipping fees because of that. We have saved on our gas with our vehicles, going to recycle, you know, dropping stuff off. We've also cut back to try to help our citizens in the winter months, from March to April, to pick up trash once a week, to, so that we can have our folks in the shop, working on our equipment, maintaining it, so we can keep it up, so we don't have to spend $300,000 for a brand-new garbage truck. So all of that weighs into the factors of trying to save our citizens' funds. But I've been a huge advocate of this since we started it. If we'd have had to do this on our own, we'd have spent over, back then, three or four years ago, we'd have spent $300,000, $400,000 just to buy the cans. And then we'd have had to do it. And, and thank God, OBX Hauling came in, offered that to us. We, we, they bill it, we don't have anything to do with it, they pick it up. They're great to work with for that amount of money, it's, it's saving us. And Debbie has the numbers, our, Steve, at our department, we can tell you how much we've saved in tipping fees over the last three or four years, and maintenance on vehicles and gas. I mean, we've got it all down.
I've seen a lot of, well, I'm in there a couple times, we're tourists, are really good about some recycling here too, which is happy, you wanna see all those Virginia plates and that, but, no, it's just a great, you know, it's a central location, you're going somewhere and just stop off there, boom, boom, people are very helpful.
And the other thing we do too, just like we just done this last pickup, now we'll, we'll haul that over there, we'll dump it. Annually, we'll, we'll rent a chipper, chip it all up. You can go get your mulch from there, we don't charge you. That saves on our tipping fees. It's, we're, we look at every single way humanly possible to cut your, cut your costs down and hold your taxes in line.
Yeah, and it's that, the curbside recycling, which I used to, and we're in the same situation as Bob, we use a can way more than we use a garbage can. Two good things about it is you don't have to sort anything, this glass, cardboard, whatever's recycled, well, you put it, they take care of that at their plant. And the other thing is, I believe when we started paying that, it was over $8. And the more they get, the lower the prices. Now it's under $7. So I'm not saying it's gonna drop any further, but if, you know, hypothetically, if they get more customers, it might even drop further, and if, of course, if everybody did it.
If everybody signed up, it would be.
I was gonna say, Sue's had her hand up here, if I can follow.
I just wanted to say, if we're getting a benefit from Outer Banks hauling, it's not very well utilized. You do not see that many of those yellowtop cans. My street, 12 houses, one person, me, recyclers.
That's why you hear me, that's why you hear me at a board meeting, buggering Mary, to put it on our website, and, and constantly pump that.
Absolutely, because it sounds like the more we get, the more benefit.
Absolutely.
And also to remind too, that every now and again, the town has these really cool workshops on how to use a pickle barrel to make yourself a composting thing, and also take gray water off your roof or your yard. The town does some cool stuff, and that's a couple of the cool things too. The town does some cool stuff, and that's a couple of the cool things, too.
Another thing here, and I might be wrong on this, and Steve, you might know better than I, but didn't North Carolina pass a law this year where all plastic bottles have to be recycled?
Yeah, I think that was about a year ago. There's a ban.
Yeah, so everybody should be recycling now.
And I think gla, I want to say glass, too.
Well, we have a program now of glass. Our businesses, Ben can address that, he's a business in town, and he has, he has to keep all his glass in a container, he has to physically take it over there, or do they come to you now, Ben?
You can use a private contractor or do it yourself.
Okay.
Residentially, there's unbelievable tons of glass, of plastic and aluminum, going in those regular-
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that the county-
All year long.
I've been to the county site, to where they crush that. And they can crush it in, in several different forms, they can crush it so fine, you can put it in your hand, and do this, and won't even bother. If you go over here tonight, when you leave, look at our flower, around our flagpole, you go over there, they can't keep it. People are over there constantly picking it up, and putting it in their flower beds, whatever. That they initially wanted to use it for a subface for roads. They, people come and get it so much, they're not even able to do that. So, there's, there's a ton of glass that's going over there, that's certainly not going back into our landfills. Of course, that was a state regulation that they-
Tax, tax on restaurants.
Yeah, tax on restaurants, right.
All the restaurants in here know. Help me with all that.
And it is paid.
Costs us a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, it sure is.
And it's really what saved the town all that money, is that you stopped having to pick up all our glass.
Right, yeah.
And we had to pay to get it all the way.
Right.
And because it's required, it drove the price of glass to zero, so no one wants it. It's a tough situation, and restaurants kind of took a shortcut in that state, but you're welcome.
But we, we didn't do it, and we got blamed the state on that.
No, the state, we fought a good fight.
We did.
We lost.
Well, speaking of trash and cleanup, I was, Ivy, can I put you on the spot? You could do a kind of PSA for, this is the Clean Sweep, I probably did a, held back, it's a, for a proclamation for this.
Yeah, Clean Sweep, um, is, this weekend, it's Saturday, um, there's various locations where you can go pick up a bag and clean up the beach. At the Back House, there's going to be a location, um, it's a worldwide event, um, it's held within about a month of each other across, across the country, and, um, we chose this weekend, so. And then there's a Trash Fest afterwards, in the backyard of the Green Station.
Is that right, Norsha?
Yeah.
Yeah. I might just feel a little windy.
Who else has anything you would like to bring up this evening? Well, I would like to just make two announcements real quick, and I will see if anyone else wants to make announcements, or if anyone else has any last one that they think they want to bring up. Our, once again, our co-host Police Department is working on putting, putting out another gang awareness presentation. If you haven't seen that, it's going to be November seventh here, in this room, at six P.M. They have done this twice previously, and it's been very well received, incredibly informative. It is not something we film and put on TV, given the nature of some of what's covered. We don't want to feed the fire, so to speak, and some of that information is, is best not put out. So please come and be present for that, it's very informative, it will help show you what to look for in the communities, whether it's Kettlebells or anywhere on the beach. And I just hats off to the Police Department for taking the lead on that, and you guys do a wonderful job with that. The other thing is, on November first and second, this is the Fourth Annual Missions of Mercy Dental Clinic, for those of you, I think there's a lot of you that are actually already volunteering for that, but it's a two-day clinic, takes about two hundred local volunteers to pull that off, in collaboration with the North Carolina Dental Society. And we'll have about forty to fifty dentists volunteering their time to be here for those two days, and they will provide dental care for anyone in need. So if you have employees that, that don't have dental care, with coverage, and need dental care, they do cleanings, fillings, extractions, and even some denture repair work. So please help spread the word, it's November first and second, and there's information on the county website on that.
Where do they do that?
They actually do it at the Parks and Rec here, it's in Kettlebells, and it's a, they pretty much turn the entire gymnasium, they set up about sixty dental chairs, they do x-rays, triage, and it's an amazing event, so. Anyone else have anything to add to that?
I got a couple of things, Mayor, and, and Tom, I don't want to speak for Mike, but he, he chairs our street special projects, and I can assure you, if you bring, you're at that issue to his committee, they, they have, our, our town engineer near meets with them, that they'll, they'll look at that, and they prioritize. I can assure you, this, this board, when we had the problem, it's been about a year or so ago, I guess, with the water situation, Steve over in the-
Ocean Acres.
Yeah, Ocean Acres.
Yeah.
The board stepped up to the plate, and we got it done, and I'm sure Mike will, will address that for you guys in a, in a timely fashion. And, and then finally, this, this is the only way, I'd like to see us, we do this a couple of times a year, but I'd like to see us do it about quarterly, because it, this is the only way we, we can address raining in, or what your concerns are, and how to address them. And, and I think, I think we got a lot of info tonight, and, and I think you'll see this board react to everything you brought to our attention, and try to, try to do what we can to make it better for you. And thank you all for coming, it's, it's a good turnout, and this is kind of things we need to, to improve our town.
Steve, if you want, I wanted to tell everybody, we started our street survey, that we've gotten, surveyed the street conditions, we started it last Friday, and this is my first opportunity I had to go along. Jerry Proler Glenn, and Howard Kimble from Planning Board, and of course Steve, and Tote from over at the-
Street Supervisor.
Yeah, Street Supervisor. And it's kind of eye-opening, and you see the condition of some of our streets, but there's none that are really poor, I would say, but there's, there's some poor streets. But we have adopted a policy over the last few years, you might want to expound on a little bit about the drainage, along with the street repairs, and that might be something that can help, maybe not necessarily in this situation, it'll help in the future if it comes. Our current engineer, who's extremely good at his job, has given us some great advice, the advice he gave us some years ago was, turn into a street, do a drainage, otherwise it may be a waste of his time. If you can, want to add to that.
And the water main, kind of a holistic approach, so you get one disruption in the neighborhood, can get rejuvenated, all the repair is done, and then, and then we go away for hopefully twenty years.
It may cost you a little more, but you won't have to come back, like you said, for twenty, maybe thirty years. And if you do come back, all you have to do is put it over when you're on, with the fracas.
Um, I'll just say, and I'm, and I'm just saying this because I work in the building, for those of you that want to early vote, early voting at the Bomb Center is from ten to two, I, I know that lots of people come early and get really frustrated, and so I just want to say that it is only from ten to two, and they can't do the machines at any other time. So if you're in line at two o'clock, they will allow you to stay in line, but, and, and if you go to vote on, actually, November the sixth, it's here, not there, so lots of people get that confused. And early voting ends on November the second, it's up until the Friday before Election Day, so you can, you can vote November the second. And it's, you can actually early vote in Manio on that Saturday, and I don't know what the actual hours on that are, but at the Bomb Center, it ends on November the second, and that's what I'm familiar with, and the hours there are tended to, if you go to Manio, you can vote all day. If you go to the Board of Elections there, they're open all day. But, but I'll tell you, up until this point, the lines have been pretty long, if it's like-
Not in Manio.
Yeah, not in Manio.
Not in Manio.
And if it, if it's like in years past, as time goes on, the lines will get less, but I was there today, and I've been in a conference all week, and the lines were still almost to my door, so that's a good thing, just to, but just, just know that you can get out there and early vote.
I did want to bring up, I'm sorry, one more thing I neglected to bring up. I got a couple of emails, and I think maybe all of us know them, there's not a name on this one, but it's from Mom's Sweet Shop, and it's about LED lights, and signs, and goalboards and such. We've already covered some, we've already covered the subject with ordinance recently, so we're not going to have to worry about LEDs any time in the near future. And speaking about outdoor displays, Richard Quidley from T-Tops sent a letter, and he is talking about all the businesses that have outdoor displays, and he's, they don't actually outdoor display at all, that I know of, I haven't seen it there, maybe on occasion, but, uh, he writes in his letter, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but, he writes that in, in a typical summer, that their inventory includes up to twenty-five hundred flags, and they're highly, highly restricted on what they can put out, and he's questioning the fairness of that, and, you know, he may have a point on that side. That's absolutely a matter for discussion. And he also, even though he would like to do that, and have an outdoor display, he's very concerned about, he and others that he mentions in here are very concerned about some of the displays that are going on, that are not attractive. We can't, you know, the problem with the outdoor displays is, you know, if we just say you can do it, then there's a whole bunch of stuff that is not aesthetic, it just doesn't look good. And sometimes that's, is the subject there?
Problem.
Yes. It's a matter of opinion, but, and he's sent along a bunch of pictures, I'm not going to show them to you, I don't want to embarrass anybody, but he's sent along about nine pictures of businesses that he thinks that are kind of overdone, and in most cases, I agree with. But I just wanted to point out that this is, you know, it's a two-way thing here, you know. When Bob mentioned that thing we did with the outdoor displays before, and we had the businesses in, and we spoke specifically, and the end result was the police yourself, and I'll be honest with you, nothing changed. I, I didn't see any policing period. So, that was, you know, we listened for, for several years, we listened, and we discussed it. So I'm not, I, I just want to say that I think we have to be aware of the facts, that we have to look for, look out for each other, and we don't want to hurt any businesses, but we also have people that are concerned about how the town looks, and we have to balance that somehow. And I did want to thank everybody for coming, please, if still there's anybody left who wants to pick up or ahead.
In your conversations with the other mayors, and with Warren, about the streets, and maybe some education for the foreign students, I thought about that a little bit, too. I don't use many, do occasionally each summer, but I know some of the other businesses, and we've got Chamber Commerce here, between Chamber members, we probably use them all. If the towns could come up with a graphic that could be posted, I'd be happy to put one right on my front door, foreign students come in and, and shop in the store, and I know the restaurants, and between all the people that employ them, if we could teach them about Memorial and Wrightsville, if we could teach them about the beach road, because they don't know. And if we could teach them that in a quick, cheap way, I think the businesses would be more than happy to help, because we, we kind of owe it to them, to the students, to their families. I mean, it's, they send their kids over here, we need to send them back, we need to send them back happy, with some money and healthy. Steve?
Can I make a comment? I helped with Pathways for a good five years or more, I transported those kids all over this place, and I met many of them, and at the time, when Nancy Valentine did that, kind of gone into the contracting, so the offices they had on the street up there, Mustang or whatever, that's closed. But when those kids come in, we had bike maps and everything, we actually gave them a seminar on bike safety. But all these kids, this is a strange town, you can't go to find all these streets, and when you tell them Wrightsville in the middle and stuff, until they get here for a week or two, this is totally foreign to them. So they learn from their friends, the people they're living with, and most of them figured out pretty quick to stay, try to stay off the main drive. There are some that don't because they're still weren't educated. Now, this year, nobody did this, as far as I know. Those, I don't think we had less students this year, because I know the program that I helped out for many years, it's really not, she used to donate from home. But it isn't that there wasn't, I think the Police Department, even at the seminar, they had Pathways had you guys, had some policemen come over and talk to the kids, and she'd get them up. It's a serious situation, because when I was there, there was serious accidents that occurred, several of these students, one from Russia about three years ago, her family come over, and many of us donated money for them to come here and take her home in the fall. She was seriously injured in an accident down there by, it wasn't a drugstore, I think it was, but, and I know there's been some others. And actually, that student got hurt, I actually had transported up to the Social Security Office, so I, I kind of met her, but it isn't that there isn't something going on, but I don't think there's anything organized going on like Pathways used to do, and you probably should reconsider. But Steve, unless you had a contact like Pathways, these kids come in at different times, day and night, we'd pick them up, I'd be picking them up at midnight, in Norfolk at the airport. It was horrendous, and friends volunteers, but most of these kids, they just want to come here and work, make some money, have a good time, go to the beach, party a little, they're good kids, and some of them I even got to be friends with, I still get emails from, but it's a serious problem, and, you know, I know that we addressed Pathways with them, and most of them, but they learn pretty quick to try to stay off the main highway, especially at nights, but, you know, sometimes they're like young people, they're invincible, and they're going to take chances. So I don't know what you can do more than kind of warn them. Just, just give you a little comment on that situation.
Mark, I'm going to put you on the spot for a minute, because I don't think Dana's been here long enough. This is an issue this board, as, with the Board of Commissioners, has been dealing with, what, about five or six years now? And at one time, didn't we do something in Kettlebells to print up some media to hand out?
We had some flyers that we, and we actually coordinated with Nancy Valentine, and we went over and had a session when they come to town. We actually donated to bikes, town donated to bikes, to give them, and put reflectors on it. And it's something that we're going to have to get a group effort to get it back, and try to get the message out, but it's, you know, we're busy twenty-four, seven, and we're going back, and we're handling these accidents, and it's tough, it's tough for us to, to deal with, and we had to deal with it quite a bit in this summer, you know, so.
We don't have, you don't have that central location that Pathways provided for more information path that we gave these students, because we have our own seminars with them when they first come in. But again, this is all strange, many of them have been in the United States, they're coming to a town that has no transportation buses or anything, just taxis, they don't, they're struggling for money if they get here. It's bicycles, that's how they travel, they try to travel at home, that's what they travel here, and we don't have the sidewalks.
That's their main mode of transportation.
We don't have all the sidewalks that you're talking about.
Some of them leave businesses twenty-four hours a day, and they're getting out to midnight, and they're going home, taking the beach road, taking the bypass, we see it night and day, and, and it's, there's people driving the vehicles, you know, in this last couple-
I knew some that go up the key, I guess, to Walmart and another.
Yeah.
And you have no options, except the beach road to some extent, or the main bypass, they line you off.
It's definitely, I mean, it's a county-wide issue, it's not a Kettlebells, I mean, it's just, we're all facing this, and it's going to take the-
And it's important to do it, that it's not just the foreign students, I mean, we had a lot, that was a local, you know. And so, I mean, I think that it's just, you know, an awareness campaign, like Sheila said, I think it's happening everywhere, and maybe it's something that we do across the, maybe we combine, you know, forces with businesses for awareness campaigns, along with, you know, other mayors and commissioners.
I think this will, the mayor's, the mayor's and the chairman of the Commissioners, Warren Judge, and also Sheriff Doughty, we meet for lunch once a month, and this has been a topic, and will continue to be, and then hopefully from that, it will grow, and try to get the community initiative going. It's definitely, you can tell, it's a hot button for everyone, and sensitive, and, and, for everyone, and sensitive, and certainly very tragic, what's happened this past summer and even summers before. But this is kind of just part of another thought, but, and maybe you all can answer this, too, but the stopping at the crosswalks on the beach roads, we can't, can we make it, can we get tickets? When do you start taking tickets?
There's a small one, and we have, DOT has put up signs along the crosswalks, and we have a right as pedestrian, when you come up to a crosswalk, if you're driving, and you see them approaching the crosswalk, you have to stop and allow those pedestrians. And it's, we see it riding in the summertime all day. Our troops are out there riding the roads, and people will start out, and some people won't stop, and they've got to grab their kids and-
Well, they don't stop, because where they, a lot of times, they're coming from places where, I mean, if you live in a city, and you're a driver, you stop. If someone, if you see someone, you stop. I mean, that's, you know, but people, you know, and I think probably the locals are the most guilty. I mean, the ones that I see, when I'm crossing the beach road on my bike with my kids, the most of the time, they're not, they're in place. Most of the time, they're of the exit place. So, I mean, if they just went out there that people aren't getting tickets for it, then, you know, it probably will take a couple of months of the word getting out, that people are getting tickets for it.
And again, you get more, every year, we see you get more and more vehicles on the road, and more and more people and families, and we're glad for the families and visitors to come down. We've got to do our part, too, to get the message out and awareness. It was a tough year.
Would you consider more signage, you know, for pedestrians?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I actually have a follow-up, and somebody had wanted me to bring up an issue very similar to that, and it actually centers around the fact that when families are coming off the beach, not only do the, not necessarily do the family members run into the road, but the kids run into the road, because you've got mom with the satchel and everything, the kids are running into the road. What the person actually asked for was, is there any way we can put up something to, and I kind of said probably not, but I would ask this, is there any way we could put up something to, to keep the kids from running into the road? I know. That's what I said, because my, my first thought is the liability issue, if the kid runs into that, then he's going headfirst into the road. But I said I would bring it up, so I've brought it up. But I, I agree with that fact, is that if the kids run out, but still, the cars need to be ready to stop, kids are not. But I, there is an issue with that, but there is nothing more hard stopping than, than a kid that's 10 feet in front of the parents.
When you get down to Nancy, that they have signs at each of those intersections, why shouldn't Kill Devil Els have similar, those crosswalks?
We do, and just about all of our- We went out and marked the roads, and we've got the white markers that go across the roads. We've done, I think, everything that we can do with the town to get out there.
And I would say that, you know, I think as we continue to meet with this group, we'll be looking at all of the things that encompass pedestrian, and cycle, bicyclist, and all safety. I mean, there's so many issues, and it's really kind of a big thing to tackle, but the important thing is that people stay vigilant on it and put forth ideas, and I think there'll be forums to do that, so.
I don't want to prolong the discussion, but I will say there are some initiatives underway. DOT did a study, they went and analyzed all the intersections, all the sidewalks, all the crosswalks, made recommendations, the signs, everything. And then, I had a meeting, that's three, three weeks ago yesterday, I mean, three weeks ago tomorrow, where I sat down with John Harris, Mike Smith, he's the Beach 104 media man, Moose, people probably know him as that, and, and they talked about, with DOT officials, this campaign that they're pattering after Raleigh. They tried to get a governor's highway safety grant last year and were denied. So we could have been ahead of it, but what they're putting together right now, as we speak, is a, is a, is a plan to have a campaign, an awareness campaign that's going to be both DOT and some of our businesses getting together to cooperate on this, that should be, should hit the, hit the road in May of 2013. So there are people that are really, really working hard on this, and I appreciate all the interest, and it's a very important topic.
Well, with that, I think Zerrin's been here, so you don't have anything else?
I think we've covered it pretty much. Just PSA, you know, public service announcement with Charter, Channel 12, we've got great public awareness channels here, 19 and 20. Making that aware to people, too, and putting that out is good. I want to reiterate what Steve said, this is a great forum for businesses. I want to thank the mayor, council members, and, and all the heads that came out, and we're here tonight. Makes us feel like we're part of this. So, we all want this, I'll do it more often. The more you want to do it, the more I'll come and show up. I think it's positive for the community and business growth, and I don't see any negative out of everything that came out tonight. I think it's a great opportunity to voice all of our opinions, to get everything out. So thank you all for, for putting up with us and our opinions.
Thank you. It's successful to do while we're here, so we really appreciate it. And with that, even though it's been informal, we do need a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry? You say sorry? I think you spoke out. Please, okay.
You said that's for last.
Sorry, Bob.
Hey, I was just going to have to take my comments from 30 minutes down to 10. Anyway, I'd like to echo Ron's comments. I mean, these things are always very helpful for us, and I thank everybody for taking their time to come out tonight, it means a lot to us. Because this is one way that we do get information that we can bring back, and we can discuss with the board. We don't do forums like this, and people don't come to meetings, or call us, or email us. You've got five people up here that are making decisions for the town. And I don't think that's what citizens of our town want, but if we don't have these meetings, and people show up, and you don't come out and tell us what you're concerned about, you're relying on us for everything, and we don't want that. So I think this is the biggest turnout we've ever had for one of these meetings, and I agree with Bob, I think we need to do these quarterly instead of semi-annually, because we do get a lot of good information. These have always been successful. And the other thing I'd like to say is about the upcoming election, everybody needs to exercise their right to vote. We're very fortunate that we live in a country that allows us to pick our leaders, whether it be on a local or national level. Please exercise your right to vote. A lot of people think that, well, you know, my candidate's going to win, I don't need to vote. Go back and look in Derrick County's history, there's been more than one election that has been decided by one or two votes, and then somebody comes up and says, well, I was going to vote for you, but, you know, we knew you hadn't won. Never assume that somebody has an election won. Go out and vote. And the other thing I'd like to close with is, no matter who your candidate is, if you see them out, thank them for giving their time and wanting to run for these positions. Because it does take a lot of time out of their life to serve either local level or high up. And whether it be your candidate or not, these folks deserve accolades for taking their time and their willingness to serve. Because I know Bob's a good friend of mine, and I know how much time he spent over the last month. He's basically taken, leave absence from his job to run his campaign. So these folks are giving up a lot to run for these seats, and it's very rare that we get more than a couple of people that want to run. So when you see these people, thank them, let them know you're appreciative of the time that they're willing to give up to serve you, the citizens of Derrick County. Come on.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Matt, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.